Stay in the region, but I think he's from the, you know, like SCC area.
It's 2:30. I'll call this special meeting of the Salina City Commission, November 30th, 2023 to order.
So, Mayor Hoppick?
We need requests. The Open Meetings Act has been notified.
Apologies. Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Longby?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Langwitz?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Thank you. We'll open the meeting with Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. All rise and.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're here today to approve a resolution. And I will look to City Manager Skrag on Zoom.
So this is item 3.1 to approve Resolution Number 23-8176 authorizing the election of the city to opt out of the settlement class in both the DuPont and 3M aqueous film-forming foams product liability litigation cases and authorizing the vice mayor, city staff, and legal counsel to sign and deliver any documentation necessary to complete the prescribed opt-out process.
Thank you. Now we'll look to City Manager Skrag.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Longby. I'll try to keep it brief, but I feel like I owe you an explanation, an apology, and some thank yous, and then I'll turn it over to Legal Counsel Greg Bankson. But as the title of the topic indicates, there is a class action suit with that. We have to opt out if we don't want to be part of that class. We were made aware of that a while ago. Staff made a preliminary review of that and did not pick up on or did not conclude at that time that it was something that we needed to opt out of. But then on further review, and we'll get into this as part of the staff report, concluded that probably isn't our best interest to opt out. And then the difficulty that necessitated the special meeting was the opt-out deadline is Monday, and there wasn't any alternatives in terms of delivery other than certified mail, US mail. And so we needed to ask of you to have a special meeting to make this decision to give us enough time to get that notice. So a brief explanation of we kind of, as we look at it, further identified the need to opt out, which necessitated the special meeting. So I want to apologize. We don't do special meetings very often, and I certainly appreciate everybody's responsiveness as we pulled that together, particularly you as the governing body. But there was a lot of work going on behind the scenes. As you can see, I'm zooming in, Jacob Wood's zooming in, Sean Hennessy's zooming in. We're all at the City Manager Conference in Dodge City. So staff back there in Salina did a lot of heavy lifting to get this pulled together. So I appreciate the city clerk and Holly McGinnis and Greg Bankson, Martha Tasker, Erin Martin, Scott Gardner in particular for facilitating putting this all together. And with that, I will turn to Greg Bankson. He's done the legal analysis and can get into the details of this topic.
Mr. Bankson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioners, Mr. Skrag. As the blue sheet indicates, and I'll try to go into some detail about what the blue sheet tells us, we realize that this did develop quickly and I don't know how many folks might either be viewing or viewing this later, to be sure that everyone is aware of the context. As Mr. Skrag indicated, the city of Salina has been included in the settlement class in two United States District Court cases, happens to be in the District of South Carolina, the Charleston Division. But it reaches over the entire country in terms of the identification of those cases. The one case is captioned as City of Camden at all, meaning and others, versus the EI DuPont Dean and Moore's Company and a number of other defendants. The other case is the City of Camden versus 3M Company. And as was mentioned, both relate to the matter of PFOS or what is referred to, that's the acronym for aqueous film-forming foams. And this is a product liability sort of class action case. The numbers are significant. The proposed settlement agreement in the DuPont case refers to a settlement amount of $1,185 million. The 3M settlement agreement refers to $12,500 million. I was so concerned about the right number of zeros, I left off the dollar sign. But anyway, I don't know that I'd ever written or said that amount before. But the other aspect is, in the blue sheet there, I refer to what that settlement class includes, and it includes all water systems in the United States that as of June 30, 2023, are subject to the monitoring rules in the US EPA's Fifth Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule, commonly known as UCMR 5, if you hear anyone refer to that. That includes what they refer to as large systems serving more than 10,000 people, and of course, that's the classification that the city of Salina is in, and small systems serving between 3,300 and 10,000 people. The city of Salina is listed as what is referred to as a Phase 1 settlement class member. Now, I think maybe it's helpful to get into what are some of the distinctions here. And frankly, we are dealing with more unknowns than is commonly the case when you're dealing with a class action sort of scenario. In the traditional class action scenario, you would have the economies of combined suit, combined counsel, an identified defendant, a determined amount of funds, and then a system of allocating those funds among claimants, when commonly the claimants will have a quantified damage claim against that defendant. And it's a matter of establishing, yes, they have a legitimate claim, but it becomes a math problem to then simply look at what is the appropriate allocation of whatever that settlement sum is. Well, in this situation, as a member of the class, and if the city were to entertain continuing in the class with all of these other folks in the United States, that is based upon testing and the results of that and a rather complex formula then that they are utilizing in this case to allocate those funds. This is a comparatively very fast-moving class action. And as a Phase 1 class member, all the public water suppliers in Phase 1 have a timeframe of 60 days from after the judgment is entered or the court approves the final settlement to present those results and go through that claim process. Ms. Tasker is here and can certainly answer better than I can in terms of the anticipated testing, the timeframes, how that would work. But we just know that this is a very fast-moving process and quite unpredictable in terms of whether the testing results would, I mean, you hope you don't have a basis to proceed with a claim depending upon the test results. But that's, that's the unknown side of what we're dealing with as far as remaining in the class. What, in the other side of the analysis is what is the potential downside of remaining in the class? You have the general concerns with PFOS in general. It's slow degrading. You are hearing more and more about it in the media, of course, and it is of significant concern on a nationwide basis. But there is, I dare say, far less known than unknown yet in terms of how we're all going to deal with the PFOS phenomenon. Here, we also have the unique aspect, or I should mention, as you might imagine, with that settlement comes a settlement agreement that has release language, as you would expect it to have. But again, we're in that area of it's not a matter of having, you know, known a quantifiable damage and seeking recovery for that damage and going on down the road. It is difficult to anticipate the potential ramifications of being subject to the release that one is subject to by staying in the class. And that release applies to anyone who stays in the class, whether they assert a claim or not, or whether they recover having asserted a claim or not. So that, if you will, takes on considerably more significance in terms of the consequence of staying in the class and leaves one having to speculate as to the potential ramifications of staying in the class. Here, as the city of Salina, we also do have, as I mentioned in the blue sheet, one other consideration, and that is the city, along with its partner, Salina Public Entities, is, as you know, undertaken a significant responsibility and obligation with regard to the remediation of the former Schilling Air Force Base contaminants. There is much more to be learned about whether that will involve any PFOS considerations. And while unanticipated, one thing that we have to be concerned about is not, or what certainly was a contributing factor to staff's and our recommendation, would not to be left having been party to that release if for an anticipated, unanticipated, and hopefully entirely academic, but yet something we have to think about, is as we deal with that remediation process, not to frankly be penny wise and a pound foolish if we find ourselves in a situation where either of these defendants, DuPont or 3M, have any responsibility for any PFOS that could be identified in the future in relation to even that remediation project. And the potential, you know, the release language, as you might imagine, is several pages long, and it's subject to a degree of interpretation. But in looking at it, and I should mention, certainly have consulted yesterday and again this morning with our environmental counsel, Andrew Davis, with the Stinson Firm. He's out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. But in talking with him, he concurs with the staff's and our recommendation to proceed with the opt-out process as opposed to staying in the class. And again, you know, I'm sorry that we're faced with balancing so many unknowns, but that is the circumstance that this sort of matter with PFOS being the subject of the litigation finds us in. And all of that being said, on balance, staff and we as legal counsel and with the concurrence of our special environmental counsel believe it to be in the city's best interest to opt out so that we are not burdened, if you will, over the long term with being bound to any release terms associated with remaining in the class. As I said, I'm sure if you have technical questions about where things stand on.
Is this solely our decision to make, or has the Salina entities all been conferred with and they agree?
We did not pursue that avenue. It is, I believe, the city commission's discretion strictly from the standpoint of the city's operation of the public water supply system. That is, that is what precipitated us being included in the class along with all of the other public water supply systems in the, in the country. So I do believe it is strictly within the discretion of the governing body. The, I would expect that the remaining SPEs would be supportive of us not encumbering that aspect of the city's and their responsibility with that release language as well.
Did we sign on to this class suit prior to the Schilling settlement?
No, this first initiated or notices were in October. Am I correct? Yeah, this all developed well after.
And what time on? We were just rolled into the class.
Yeah, that's the other aspect. We, this is, I mean, it was, it sounds counterintuitive that you find yourself in a class action and have to opt out. But that is.
So we didn't get the postcard to join the suit? It just happened automatically?
No, no, it's, they, they included, I mean, you can imagine how long the exhibits are because they list every Phase 1, Phase 2 city. You know, there are others in, in Kansas that are included, Wichita this week. We have been in consultation with their, the city attorney's department with the city of Wichita. They opted out on Tuesday, and we've been in conversation with them in terms of, you know, what, what their analysis is.
Is there any estimate how many total cities are involved?
I didn't, I didn't try to count them either. They're not numbered.
I just wondered how far 12 billion will go.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound like it'll go very far.
You know, you can imagine, it's virtually every, well, I, I almost said every municipality, but that almost unduly limits the, because you've got rural water districts, you've got every, anybody that's providing water.
Commissioners, if it's helpful, you may recall that we were part of the class on the opioid settlement. And so we, we stayed in that class, and we get some of those settlements that come to the state of Kansas and then get distributed on a per capita basis. And they're pretty nominal compared to, you know, what, what we might want to pursue if we were to take it up as it related to the Schilling Air Force Base or something like that. So that's kind of, they're not necessarily the same. I can't tell you what the total dollar amount of that opioid settlement was, but kind of in the same order of magnitude. And it's really, as Greg described earlier, kind of a cost benefit analysis of that, waiving our possible claims in return for that, that nominal class settlement amount compared to kind of our unique circumstance with remediation at Schilling Air Force Base.
This is Mayor Hoppick here. Has that settlement actually come to fruition, or is this just what they're asking for?
Anything that I've seen indicates that at this point in time, that is the currently agreed upon settlement amount. There's a representative set of, you know, plaintiffs, and I understand that to be the current amount, and that there is a hearing scheduled, I think December 14th, coming up fairly soon.
Is that, that, are those dollar amounts, is that before or after attorney's fees come out of that? Because usually on these class actions, a fairly substantial dollar amount that goes to the law firms, correct?
I think that's fair to say, and it would be my understanding that that is, that those would be included in those amounts.
So the 12.5, 12 billion, 500 million would be what they would actually be paying out to municipalities?
The, I am not sure about that.
Okay. Because that would be watered down substantially, I would guess, once the, because are most of those taken on as a contingency that they, you know, as far as?
I think, I think it's the nature of a contingency case, yes.
Of course. I am glad to hear that, that you've talked to some other municipalities and also that you reached out to Special Counsel Davis, because that's, you know, I'd like to, would have asked for their input in this. So I'm glad that is taken care of.
Yeah, I appreciated his quick assistance.
If this is at all helpful, as a frame of reference, if you take the 12.5 billion and divide it by the population of the United States, that's $37.66 per capita. Now, you know, that's, that's a real rough comparison. That doesn't mean every person will be represented in the class. That also doesn't take into account the illegal fees that go with it either.
Usually when people don't want to accept a release, it's to protect their interest in pursuing action later. Is that a simplistic reason for not accepting a release or being, or are the terms of the settlement, would they be onerous on our ability to proceed with what we're doing at Schilling? Or would we be restricted in that regard? Because I would imagine for us to take on a suit of this type on our own would be cost prohibitive for, for the city Salina to do by itself. So I don't see us, you know, worrying about it as far as our future desire to sue them ourselves. But does it, are we unduly influenced or restricted by the settlement terms as far as what we have to do or with our agreement with the federal government for that, that money?
Well, the distinction you're making is a good one and, and one that I had considering exploring a little bit further. There's certainly no suggestion here that there's any, I don't think even remote suggestion that we would seek unilaterally to, if, if a problem arose strictly as it related to the public water supply, there's no expectation that we would ever decide, well, we're just going to go sue DuPont and 3M as a city of Salina and see how that goes. Of course, I never thought we'd have to sue the United States government either. But the, so no, there's no, nothing there as to looking to any anticipated thought of pursuing those, these two entities strictly in terms of what could arise in relation to the, to the system as we know it now. The, to your point, and you know, as I say this, goodness, you know, we certainly don't anticipate the scenario. It's definitely a worst case scenario, is as the limitations on levels of PFOS continue to be analyzed and determined at the EPA level and not knowing, it's the unknown in relation to what work is left to be done in the Schilling project as it relates to the protection of Salina's water supply source. Because as you know, the primary motivation is not that there's any current danger to health or the environment, immediate exposure, but it's an, it's the protection of the public water supply wells as the groundwater migrates predominantly to the northeast. So that's why, and granted, it's an abundance of caution. But the concern is that, again, worst case scenario, you could be, find yourself in a position of facing PFOS at some point in time in the future where we would not want to be hamstrung against, because of this release back in 2023, that would provide a defense if either of these two companies were the source of that contamination and the cost of that remediation required us to look to them for potential recovery.
Right. So the release would not set arbitrary limits, I mean, or restrict our ability to set our own limits? Ours probably come from KDHC anyway.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Does it hamper our ability to do whatever we think we need to do to protect our works? I would imagine we're probably one of the more tested communities around just because of the Schilling, you know. So any testing data, we probably, if we don't have it already, we're pretty close. I'm just, wanted to know exactly what we could not do in the future with the, accepting the settlement requirement. That sounds like, again, it circles back to going after these two companies. Is there any other restriction on what we could do? Because again, if that's, excuse me, an unrealistic activity for us unless we set up another class action of the communities that opted out this time, that would be a huge financial. We'd probably spare more money on that than we would just cleaning up the water, but.
I understand your point. And as I say, it's, it is, again, we're trying to balance two unknowns. But all things considered, the best analysis, at least. the best analysis, at least at the staff level and our level and in discussions with environmental counsel, was that at this point in time, in balancing the two unknowns, that we're better suited over the long haul not to have to ever see anyone pull that release language out and say, no, you can't pursue us because of remaining in that class in 2023.
Right, which would be a good reason to hold that trump card if we thought that might come to be an eventuality. I'm just wanting to get an idea of the probability of us ever taking that action ourselves. As far as slim, close to none, or maybe?
The regulations continue to be refined, and so I think our analysis is we don't know that we can quantify that for you, but certainly can't rule it out to the point that we, we felt like it was probably a better protection of our long-term interest to not participate in this class action and preserve, preserve that ability if it should become an eventuality. The, you may recall, one of the presentations that was made not too long ago identified that some of the thresholds that are talking about are below levels that it can be tested at the moment. So it's still kind of in flux in terms of what the expectation is and what that might mean for, for our circumstance. I'd kind of restating what Greg said, but I think that our conclusion was the, the Schilling responsibility makes us unique compared to everyone else that might be in that more typical, just public water drinking, water supply class. We were unique enough that we didn't think we should just lump ourselves in with that class.
Right, and one other question. Are these two companies protected from future similar class action suits by virtue of having given the entire country an opportunity to join this one?
Short answer, I believe to be yes. I mean, that, there is the cutoff date that I think was June 23rd as far as...
I mean, would the court say, well, Salina, you can't, you know, they already settled this with the, basically with the United States. They're immune from any further suits of this type?
Oh, no, that's exactly what is going on here, that yes, if you remain in the class, that's the position you're in.
Then you can't do it, right.
That's the position you're in, and that's the nut of our motivation to not want to find ourselves in that position.
Because I don't see us getting a windfall from this. I mean, if everybody opts out Camden, it's going to do pretty good, but, but not so much the money we've received now, but just what we'd be giving up, and that eventually has a monetary value, but...
Sure.
I am a little surprised that Wichita opted out. Those that don't know, that PFAS is a primary ingredient that was used in firefighting, foam, particularly with aircraft. And can Ms. Tasker tell us how, you know, we've done extensive testing. Is there levels of PFAS out there that are to be concerned with?
I can't.
You got the lab report.
When we speak about our public water supply system, we tested for PFAS back in 2014, and at that time, it was non-detect, but we tested in parts per billion. That's very small, but then the data for today is the parts per trillion. And originally, the health safety standard was 70 parts per trillion. Now they're speaking of, you know, down around the four parts per trillion is the number they're proposing. It isn't etched in stone, but that keeps being repeated a lot. So you can see there's a large difference from what we did in 2014 and now. The UCMR-5 is unregulated contaminants monitoring, and we're slated, all of the communities are slated to test that between 2023 and 2025. So we're, we have signed up with a laboratory to do our testing, and the contaminants listed in that are a large number of these PFAS, PFOS, and all the other letters that go along with it. There's, there's thousands of these contaminants, and I think they're shooting for, the ones they're looking at right now are less than 30. But those are what we'll be testing for in 2024, so we'll have that data within the next year. Our first sample's in, I think we pull in January, and we'll get results in February, March.
Is the mitigation efforts that are going to take place...
At the airbase?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that going to address the PFAS?
The, it's going to address the PFAS out at the Schilling Air Force Base. We have the direct groundwater recirculation process, which is pulling the groundwater out, sending it to our treatment facility that we're going, that's a part of our project, and it does include PFAS treatment. So the intent is to remove the PFAS through that process. So we are dealing with it at the airbase.
Ms. Tasker, based, based on those, I'm up here, sorry.
Yeah, I'm looking the wrong place for you.
Based on the results you had in 2014 and the numbers they're using now, I guess, within this class action suit, would you say we would or would not be eligible for payment? Or can you make that call?
I, I don't think I could make that call. There's roughly, there's many, many communities when you go across the state of Kansas and then national that are, would be a part of this PFAS litigation, and, but the numbers and how that settles out from community to community, I, I know there's communities out there currently that know they have PFAS in their groundwater systems and their water treatment systems because there's been a lot of info.
To take that question further, the, the testing we did in 2014 did not lead us to believe we had a issue with PFAS in our, in our current system.
That is correct. In our downtown well field where we pull water from, we did not find anything. But I still have to restate, that was parts per billion, and now we're shooting for parts per trillion. So we're testing to a very finite number, and, you know, non-detect back then could mean something. Now I can't say it don't. We will know for sure in 2024. It'd be a guess if I made a comment on that, not, not understanding the difference between parts per billion and parts per trillion is pretty substantial. You're looking for a tiny speck.
And it sounds like to me, people just chasing money.
Yes, could be.
Keep increasing the standard like that.
Yes, and there's a lot of information coming out about through our organizations of how many billion dollars a year it will take to just maintain these treatment facilities if they're put in place. So it's, it's a huge, heavy lift for the communities that would be saddled with trying to remove the PFAS from their water treatment systems, and truly, there are some that have been tagged with that. We just don't know about that at our point in time, next year.
Our current improvements at the sewage treatment plant is going to be equipped to remove the PFAS?
PFAS has not been addressed at sewage treatment plants at this point in time, so there's no treatment out there for this.
Okay, I, I thought that was part of the improvements to...
We're nitrogen, phosphorus, those type that eat, or provide a fertilizer for growing the algae in the rivers and depleting the DO and making the dead zone. So we're really, no attack for that, and I, at this point in time, they haven't even tried to set numbers. Wastewater's a little harder to test because this is the nature of the water, and probably in that case, they'll look more at the biosolids, the solids that leave the facility that the PFAS may settle out in that as opposed. So those regulations are, they haven't proposed anything, but they're, they're talking about them, let's put it that way, but they're, the water issue is so huge, they, they haven't moved on to wastewater yet.
Yeah, I, I guess we, we could talk about this for, for an extended period of time, but I guess what it comes down to me is, obviously, I've not had a chance to review the release, nor am I an attorney that would say I understood the release completely, but I think as a commissioner, I have to, to follow the, the guidance of legal counsel and, and our legal counsel and city staffs review this with the input from our special counsel, Andrew Davis. So I guess I'm not making a motion since I'm here offsite, but in my mind, I think we need to probably go with the recommendation of, of city staff and legal counsel.
Any other comments, questions? Any comments from the public? I see none. Bring her back to the commission for consideration.
Mr. Vice Mayor, move to approve Resolution 23-8176, authorizing the election of the city to opt out of the settlement class in both the DuPont and 3M Aquinas Film Forming Foams product liability litigation cases, and authorizing the vice mayor, city staff, and legal counsel to sign and deliver any documentation necessary to complete the prescribed opt-out process.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to consider Resolution Number 23-8176, authorizing the election of the city to opt out of the settlement class in both the DuPont and 3M Aquana's Film Forming Foams product liability litigation cases, and authorizing the vice mayor, city staff, and legal counsel to sign and deliver any documents, documentation necessary to complete the prescribed opt-out process. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Is there any other business any commissioner would like to bring up?
Vice Mayor, if I may, just want to, again, thank you all for assembling here this afternoon, and also let you know that there is fairly significant documentation in terms of exercising the opt-out, and I appreciate that my partner, Aaron Martin, has been working on that and has those completed, is my understanding. So we'll be able to call upon Vice Mayor Longbine to execute those, and they will, they're waiting for us at the post office, so.
Okay.
We appreciate your...
Thank you.
Response to the need.
Thank you for all the efforts of staff and the commission to come together and get this done, so.
Move to approve. I mean, to adjourn.
Motion is second to adjourn. We are adjourned. We'll see you Monday.